All right, welcome back. We're going to start with our 6.3 item, 10 a.m. presentation by Jose Valera regarding the provision of public defender services and the structuring and organization of a public defender services program. County Council?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the memorandum to your board indicates, Mr. Varela is going to be speaking today regarding structuring and organization of a public defender services program, public defender services in general. Mr. Varela has considerable experience as a public defender. His experience level and expertise is well evidenced by his resume, which is attached here. Deputy Torres from my office is also here and in front of you today. Mr. Varela is a participant in this meeting, so he can begin his presentation at any time. Good morning, Mr. Varela.
Good morning, Anita. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, sir.
Thank you. And I will begin. Thank you very much, members of the Board and President of the Board. I appreciate the ability to be able to speak to you about an incredibly important project and an incredibly important initiative that you're taking on. It bears noting that 60 years ago, the Gideon versus Wainwright decision came down, which basically gave the right to counsel to many, many who had not been able to receive that kind of representation. But over the years, it's taken public defender offices and attorneys a massive amount of work to be able to reach the competencies that ensure appropriate representation. In my 30-some-odd years of, going on 35 years of practice, I have practiced in large offices in Los Angeles and San Diego County. I've also practiced in small jurisdictions, and I've also been the public defender, the assistant and the public defender of Marin County, and I spent 20 years there in Marin County. I was honored and somewhat surprised to get a call from Mr. Torres with regard to the initiatives that were going on in Lake County in light of the Sixth Amendment report and other things. And I applaud the council for wanting to be informed as to, you know, how do you create a statutory public defender office that will provide the kind of services that are now prominent in the best of offices in and around California? I think Lake County also is very important because of the kind of county that it is, where you are situated in the state, the demographics of your county, and the impetus for change, which I think is essential. In looking at my introduction, the one thing I want to make sure you understand is, I was actually trained as an employment lawyer. I went to law school and thought I was going to be an employment lawyer. And once I got into a courtroom and fell in love with public defender work, I thought that that career was gone. Well, one of the things I've realized as a manager in a public defender office and of the creation of a public defender is that a public defender's office is a well-structured legal business if run appropriately. And what that means is ensuring that the competency is necessary to deliver the services are appropriately put in place and that supervision ensures that those competencies are up to snuff throughout the time that the office is providing those services. The Sixth Amendment report, while it speaks to the specifics of Lake County, really is also echoing the findings of the California State Bar Committee of 2006 that basically said that indigent criminal defense services had to be provided in a certain way. And if you read that report, and I've given a link to that report to Anita by email, one of the things that you see is the intense focus on supervision and competency assessment over and over again. I can tell you that that was not the case in many places that I had gone to. When I got to Marin County, there were people that hadn't been evaluated in 25 years. And that was, you know, unheard of to me, coming from San Diego where evaluations happened every year. And one of the things that happens in evaluations is that supervisors not only get to see the accomplishments of an attorney over a year period, but also assess their competencies and their training and their keeping up on their craft to ensure that clients are represented in the best possible way. I come from a form of representation that basically is collaboration. And I think the Sixth Amendment report really talks about collaboration. It is not only collaboration among the attorneys and the supervisors and the staff that will, you know, be the foundation of an office, but it also speaks to the necessity of the following up and putting into place the structure of a sound business. And as a result, in Marin County, I created a monthly evaluation program. Every March, we evaluated people. And I was one of the departments of, I headed one of the departments that had 100% evaluations done every year. It is not easy to supervise attorneys, you know, and at the same time, what we came to find out as we evaluated was that we were able to highlight the accomplishments of attorneys. And the goal of evaluation and oversight is not to, you know, look at somebody and chastise them, but rather to improve and make certain that client-centered representation is really a reality for the people of not only Lake County, but all California counties that have public defender offices. Starting a statutory public defender offices has recently been done and often at the, you know, through the impetus of the Sixth Amendment Foundation reports, recently in Santa Cruz County, they created a public defender office. As a Marin County public defender, I was a consultant, you know, mutual benefit consultant with that county, and I spoke to their HR department for over a year as they were going through the process of creating it. I sat on the board that, or the panel that chose the public defender for Santa Cruz County. So these things are happening and are important to the movement, not only the Sixth Amendment project is seeking, but that communities are asking for and in demanding in a lot of ways. So what does a statutory public defender office look like in the present day? It does not look like what many in the past have seen. Clients get appointed a public defender, the public defender just follows the case through. It's much more than that. And a lot of that comes from the revolution that was created by the PRONCs defenders through the process of holistic representation. Public defenders now are community-oriented organizations. They literally serve the community if they are done well. And that means working with community members, going out, doing outreach, creating things like expungement clinics, helping people clear their records, getting people reassessed, not only creating the legal defense necessary to take triable cases to trial or through the plea stage, but also creating an opportunity for reentry into a community with their record cleaned and their ability to sit on advisory panels, to sit and take on work that might not have been available to them before. And with the issues involving the CARE Act and other mental health homeless issues that are going around the state, a lot of what public defender offices are doing has expanded tremendously, tremendously to be able to do that. That's why a collaboration model is essential. A collaboration model in a modern public defender office means public defenders are working with everybody in the pipeline. That is to say probation, district attorney, sheriff's office, community-based organizations in order to find the solutions that work out. In Marin County, the sheriff created a reentry pod in the jail to be able to start getting people coordinated to get services upon their release. The public defender took former, a former client, and as their cases were cleaned up and as things were bettering in their life, as was noted by one of your supervisors, he came on as a case manager, helping us direct people into treatment, following people while they were in treatment. He was a peer, knowing what they were going through and to ensure those kinds of outcomes. I sent to Anita a link to a news program that was done by ABC News in San Francisco about a program that was a collaboration between the public defender's office, the probation department, the district attorney, and the sheriff, all involved in a project called the Phoenix Project. And the results of that were really to reduce in the public housing area primarily African-American clients, reduce their footprint in terms of probation. We literally reduced the number of adults that were on probation. We helped through the Phoenix Project get people's licenses bagged, get people employed. We worked with, you'll see interviews of some of the individuals that were involved in that. That's what public defender offices look like now. They're holistic. They are wraparound, community resourcing. We see the public defender system as simply an entryway to allow people to get to the place that they can better their lives and be productive members of the community. So public defending has taken on a lot. And the process of putting these offices together is daunting. You do need to have a lot of coordination with regard to that. So as you look at what it is that you wish to do in the future, this is simply an introduction, you know, this is simply a introduction to me as a consultant who will assist you as much as possible or possibly take on other roles that you may see essential to be able to assist you. But my goal in being involved in this project is one of dedication. I dedicate myself to clients and to people in need, to what it means to be an indigent criminal defense attorney and what it means to make our communities better. Just to give you just an example of some of the things that I did in Marin County and just to let you know how a community can work, I created an internship program in Marin County that had high school students, college students, post-college gap year students, volunteer attorneys, and even emeritus attorneys who had retired and wanted to come back and serve their community in a certain way. My high school students went on to get accepted into major colleges around the country. My college students got accepted into the major law schools in the country, including Harvard, Yale, Georgetown, you name it, Berkeley. I have mentored students from sophomore in high school to, one of my mentees is now a third-year law student at Berkeley, and I've mentored her through her college education and through that process because we use the public defender's office as a civics learning laboratory. Those are the kinds of things that people are hungry for, your community's hungry for. And the way the state laws are changing with regard to diversion, regard to people who can be on juries, what we need is a community-based response to criminal justice. In doing my due diligence work on your county, I read a lot about, you know, health factors and criminal justice factors, and the thing that I was most, you know, piqued by was the comments made by the sheriff a few years ago and the chief of police of Lakeport, I believe, or Clear Lake, indicating that much of the arrest issues in Lake County is because there is no coordination of services available to people who are oftentimes just having mental health or substance abuse episodes. And I think they're absolutely right. The coordination that needs to be had between all of us to create the kind of solutions that are sustainable, not just, you know, in and out, but sustainable solutions that create pipelines not to prison, but to productive citizenship in a county. I think those are the things that a public defender now can do. And so I am here before you just to kind of let you know the kinds of things that I would be looking at in trying to assist your county to create a statutory public defender office that all of you can be quite proud of and that your community can take immense pride in. So it's a short introduction to me. I'm open to questions and anything else that you would like to ask me about.
Thank you. Is there anything else that you want to add?
I do not, Madam Chair. Deputy Torres may have something he'd like to add.
Normally I would, but I actually, I actually don't. I think Mr. Varela was quite eloquent in the things he stated he wants to see done, that he would prefer to see done, the things that we would benefit from as a county. I think there's more conversations to be had with this body as well as with Mr. Varela. But I think I'm more curious about the questions that may come from this body, the Board, or the public at large, especially some of our current PDs. And this is going to be a long, involved process, and I think the sooner we all start working at it together, the better it's going to be overall.
Okay. Thank you, Carlos. Supervisor Spatia.
Very nice to meet you. Thank you for this introductory presentation. Your resume definitely speaks for itself. One of the things that I want to highlight that you mentioned is your work with Santa Cruz. I think they kind of went through the similar process we did. I know in having our Sixth Amendment report, I was looking up what else they've done, and they did one similar for Santa Cruz County, and it seems to be the outcome is some of the work that you've done with Santa Cruz County as well to create the statutory public defender's office there. So I appreciate that level of experience because it might be something very similar that can be brought over here. And while I don't disagree with some of the comments that you've made as far as what would the dream public defender's office look like, my belief would be that there's phases to ensure that certain things are accomplished before we start tackling some of the more difficult things, but I look forward to the process. I know to me it's very important that we make sure to tighten up and fill in the gaps wherever there are. It's something that we need to ensure that people's rights are taken care of and not accidentally dropped. And I think some of that is difficulties itself. I mean, we have mandates that we have from the state as well that staff capacity and vacancies always make things difficult, but we have to figure out how to ensure that we can do the best that we can and do better than what we're doing right now.
Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the introduction and the overview. I love just about every bullet point in there, but I want to highlight where we want to head and probably where we're at now. So one phrase that struck out was the statutory public defender office, which sounds like a statutory creature. I infer that we are something short of that model in our current incarnation with indigent counsel. So, and I think if I'm going down the rabbit hole correctly, one big reason for that is realignment. The state basically about 10, 15 years ago started divesting. It couldn't figure out how to do, it couldn't figure out how to do things properly, so it divested to the counties in some hope that we would, in 58 different ways, somehow come to some common understanding of how to provide proper indigent defense. And in a small rural county with limited resources, it seems we have landed something well short of a statutory public defender office that has all the bells and whistles that you talked about so eloquently. So as we, as we move forward toward something closer to a statutory public defender office, are there things we can do right here in the here and now to address some of the core concerns that were raised in that Sixth Amendment report and to ensure that, given all the limitations of our current system, we can go to our community today and say, you know, we are taking adequate steps to provide a good indigent defense and protect the rights of our criminally accused?
The first thing you can do is do a resolution. A resolution voicing your commitment to the kind of office that you wish to see created. A resolution starts us all off, right? And because, you know, as we go through the process, the outcome is unknown unless you actually in a resolution seek to put out the values of your county, the focus of what it is that you want to do, so that as you start the process, you have a resolution on which you can say, this is why we're doing this. This is why we're doing that. One of the things that a resolution does is it gives your Board's guidance as to what it is that you're trying to achieve, what values you're trying to bring to your community. And it also allows not only a consultant, but an appointed public defender to have a foothold in a legal setting. The resolution gives guidance to this. From the resolution will come initiatives that will be, you know, funded by the county or resolutions that seek to get state assistance in carrying out the values of that resolution. But to me, I think the first step is to create a resolution that makes clear what it is that you hope to achieve by this process you're going to go through. You know, if what you want to do is create a statutory public defender's office, then the government code is very clear as to guidelines. Public defender offices have been in California since about 1920, 1921. Clara Foltz was the first woman admitted to the state bar, and she was the impetus and the creator of public defender systems in California. The Los Angeles County Public Criminal Courts Building is named after Clara Foltz. She's an incredible historic figure in progressive politics of the 1920s in California. And she had the foresight to kind of see what it is that could happen to defendants if they were not properly represented. So looking at the government code section, starting that process of dedicating the creation of a public defender offices, and I think, you know, using your lobbyists or your state representatives to help you get the funding to be able to create a sustainable public defender office and creating the HR structure, things of that nature. But to start out, a resolution is essential to be able to build off of.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. I'll open it up for the public.
I'm Andrea Sullivan. I am a co-administrator and the original founder of Lake Indigent Defense. I wanted to introduce myself to Mr. Varela and I hope and expect that my business partner and co-administrator will hopefully be able to at least have some sort of meeting shortly. One of the things I want to highlight is that it lid is responsible and oversees the indigent defense for about 98% of the criminal defendants in Lake County. A statutory office, and I agree wholeheartedly with everything that Mr. Varela said, but I also want everyone to understand that that's one level of conflict. There's going to be a great need to address the rest of the people that can't be represented by a statutory office, and we need to keep that in mind going forward. So I'm looking forward to speaking with Mr. Varela and trying to envision that because I don't want all of the focus to be on the office that the indigent defense community has wanted for so long in Lake County. But I work in several different counties, and I'm acutely aware that a public defender can't reach everybody, and there needs to be a plan involved to have at least three levels, possibly four levels of conflict counsel. Because if, for instance, if there's two people charged in the same criminal proceeding, public defender can only represent one. It creates an entire bar of representation for anybody that is associated. If there is a prior representation by any one of the defendants at, I mean, attorneys at a public defender, the whole public defender's office is conflicted out. So I hope we don't lose track of that in going forward. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that Mr. Varela has. Thank you.
If I may respond, I'd like to thank Ms. Sullivan, first of all, for a quick, wonderful introduction email that she sent me, and I do look forward to working with her, and she's absolutely right about what she speaks. A public defender cannot represent everybody. That a vibrant private conflict panel, as it's envisioned, is absolutely necessary to it. In Marin County, I worked very closely with the Alternate Defenders, Inc. It was an organization that was created to handle conflicts, and we worked very well together. We did mutual trainings together. We kept in touch. I met with them regularly on their advisory panel. They had a public defender. They had private attorneys, you know, that oversaw that. And they also were quite cognizant of when somebody was not delivering the kind of services that were necessary and took action to remove people from panels, did actions that were consistent with ensuring competencies. It was rare because, working together, there was a community that built, that really was built on wanting to present and represent people in the best possible way, both at the statutory public defender's office and at the alternate defender office. And so I look forward to working with the people with LID and seeing what it is that it looks like. They, you know, I know how hard they've been working. I know how hard it is to recruit people to come out to Lake County, you know, and they've done a really difficult job as well. I mean, I think that they are, they are, you know, somebody that, an organization that has to be part and parcel of any transition that's going to go on. And I applaud Ms. Sullivan for her work, and I look forward to working with them closely.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Tom Feimer. I am, as Ms. Sullivan said, co-administrator and her partner in Lake Indigent Defense. Again, thank you. It's good to hear, and we did also have a brief email introduction with Mr. Varela. Good to hear from him today. Look forward to seeing him here in Lake County soon and hopefully too, not just in front of the Board, but, you know, in the court, sort of seeing, you know, how things run and some of our attorneys at work. That would be exciting to see. It's also exciting to hear about some of the things Mr. Varela has talked about, community outreach, collaborative justice programs, things of that nature. My concern or my caveat, because I, when I was a training attorney, I worked in the San Francisco Public Defender's Office, a fantastic, well-funded program, did many of those things. But one of the primary lessons there is collaboration's a two-way street. To get results, it takes resources. It takes commitments, not just from the organization that's tasked with doing those, but also the people doing the tasking. Otherwise, what you have are unfunded mandates, which generally result in more things like the 6AC report that we saw. Historically, here in Lake County, we have done a lot with limited resources. That is nothing to be necessarily ashamed of. But going forward, if we are expected to do more, especially if our attorneys are expected to do more and they work very, very hard, that's the main thing I hear all the time, is how much, how hard everybody's working, I think we're going to need the institutional and the political commitment to provide the resources to do those things. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate Tom's comments. I think that they are right on point. The reality is that we are, that Lake County is going to have to take a really solid look at itself in terms of the delivery of indigent criminal services. And as the Sixth Amendment report points out, the state is going to have to also look at itself. This is not just a county situation. The Sixth Amendment has rightfully called out the state. And I think that the state would be well, sort of, supported in wanting to ensure funding to Lake County because otherwise, they're going to be dealing with an ACLU lawsuit, they're going to be dealing with the Fresno situation all over again. And the goal is to create the kind of funding that's going to sustain the kind of services that are now part and parcel of the kinds of plans that the governor is looking to put into place, whether it's mental health services, substance abuse services, civil courts that have to be mandated. There's a lot of work that's been put on public defender offices that a lot of times people don't even know about. For example, a public defender is supposed to For example, a public defender is supposed to monitor things at the school attendance review board to ensure that in juvenile cases, that an issue that is involved with truancy and other things don't graduate into referrals to the juvenile system. There's just a lot of stuff that is going on. But one of the things I hope does come out of our initial work is data. Much of what gets done in public defender offices is really through data. How many cases are there? At what stage of proceedings are they? And how is it that we gather this data and how is it that it's reported out to ensure, you know, the kind of results that we want to see? So, to me, I hope that as we, as LID and the creation of statutory public defender offices created, that we find out what does the universe look like. And this is going to be involved conversations with the Superior Court and I look forward to being able to meet with the presiding judge of the Lake County Superior Court and discuss, you know, some of the concerns that they may have and more than that, look at the data that exists in terms of creating caseloads that will allow the kind of work that is essential to properly representing people in this day and age.
Okay, do you want to? I just wanted to add briefly, thank you to the board. I was informed today that our extension was signed for the next 90 days, but that's not a long time. Mr. Feimer and myself, we carry a huge chunk of the caseload personally in Lake County, so we have to oversee, at least in part, this transition while actively maintaining some of the most serious cases the county has. So, I really hope, working with staff and working with the board, that we can not end up where we are 90 days from today and have some more concrete answers. There's positions to be filled, we are already interviewing with new attorneys and we don't want to see attrition because there's no real definite answers. And that's all I have, thank you.
Rob Brown, former member of the Lake County Board of Supervisors for 20 years, and I mentioned that timeline only because, well, I'll mention another timeline. For 33 years, as a licensed bail agent in Lake County, I've worked very closely with the public defender's office and the entire judicial system, very closely, not just peripherally and share some clients with them, but intimate involvement with the attorneys and the program itself. And I've seen what works and what doesn't necessarily work. And when I was on the Board of Supervisors, I was fortunate enough to carry that relationship as a bail agent onto the board through the Public Defender's Oversight Committee that we formed as a result of a grand jury report that came out many years ago. I too, I've read the Sixth Amendment Report and there's some validity to what they see as an independent body, but there were some flaws in that as well. And I'm not going to go into those right now, I don't think that's the purpose for this. I think it's, this is kind of another introductory meeting to the, to how to resolve the public defender issues as they're seen. And I'm going to be quite blunt here, as I sometimes am, but I'm not going to be disrespectful because I know you guys have many things to do and I know that COVID was a big part of why everything just came to a screech and halt as far as meetings and oversight and all that. But it's incumbent upon you, he mentioned this earlier about the political investment, but it's also, you've got to educate yourself on this. You can't do it here, I'm telling you right now, the education doesn't come here, comes up on the fourth floor. You've got to go up there and you've got to spend time, you've got to learn what their job is, first of all. The one disagreement that I have with the gentleman, that's Mr. Varela, is that right?
Yes.
What is it?
Varela.
Varela, got it, thank you. Public defenders, it's a constitutional responsibility to provide legal counsel to indigent. It's not a constitutional responsibility to provide a social worker. So, we've got to be really careful about turning our attorneys into social workers. I realize they have a commitment to our community and they already do that. Lake County is not Marin County, it's not Santa Cruz. The attorneys here, the defendants here, the judges here, all of them, they know each other. They see each other on the street, they know their kids' names, probably know their kids' birthdays. They don't have that in other areas, so we have a relationship here and I think that that's actually beneficial to us because, when we had the Public Defender Oversight Committee, did you need to get that? Is that my time?
It's your time.
Okay, well, anybody want to yield their time to me? I'm going to ask for a little more time. Are you going to give it to me?
Okay.
Okay.
I'm going to reset.
I think this time thing is an irresponsible way to handle something. This has been going on for years and it's going to continue to go on for years and I think that, to begin with, you're not going to solve all the problems. Statutory office is probably, probably what needs to be done, but you can resolve much of this right now. You can schedule a Public Defender Oversight Committee meeting. You guys, the two of you are on that committee right now, but you've never met. So, you need to reform that committee, have that meeting next month and start where, pick up where you left off. Go to the judge, go to the presiding judge and ask the judge, you know, what can you, Krista's on that, somebody from the county council's office, two members of the public, two board members. You'd be surprised how much you'll get done in that little room when you go, oh, this is what's going on. Okay, she described the conflict. There are a lot of times where you actually have more defendants than you have attorneys in some of these cases, in these cultivation cases, things like that. You'll actually have that. So, conflict is quite often that you have that instance. So, those need to be dealt with, all these things have to be dealt with. But I think if you form that, not form it, just reactivate it, get that Public Defender Oversight Committee meeting and start tearing into some of these things. It's not, that part of it is not complicated. The resolution to all this is complicated and it's very expensive, too. We don't have Marin's budget either, you don't have Santa Cruz's budget. You have a lot less than that and you have other things that you have to focus on as well. But Tuesdays are a little bit tough to spend time at the court and that's when a lot of the good stuff happens, that you can watch the public defenders, but there are other days. I suggest that you guys spend a little time up there. Actually, I suggest you spend a lot of time. This is a huge investment for the county, so I think you need to spend a lot of time up there, as much as you can, or at least have a couple of your board members go up there and come back and report. The Public Defender's Oversight Committee came back and reported every year, Cameron Reeves, after he had retired, he was part of that committee, he came back and reported on our behalf every year. And those meetings and those reports were very valuable as far as informing the board, who didn't have the time to go up there and spend, as to what was going on in that arena. So, I would suggest that you do that, but I think you can get this thing kicked off by getting that Public Defender Oversight Committee meeting, get those things reactivated sooner than later. You could, it doesn't take that long, it's a simple agenda, you don't vote on things that you, that require a budget or anything, it's just informative. And you can start sharing information, you can bring it back to the board, but I think that's a very valuable tool that you had available to you. And that's all I have right now.
Okay.
I can't guarantee that I won't come back.
Thanks. Anyone else in the chamber?
I did want to.
Oh, sorry, guests, if you would like to respond.
Yeah, I did want to respond to one thing and that is, Lake County is doing something that's unique and important and that is that it was recommended by the Sixth Amendment Report that a commission be created, but as was noted by the Speaker, you guys already have that structure in place. And in fact, that is a structure that you're going to continue in order to be able to, you know, ensure community participation and things of that nature. I think that that's going to be important because whoever, however this office is going to be created, the relationship between the office and this Oversight Committee is going to be really essential and important. And the question of who is the commission going to be the oversight of? Is it going to be the oversight of the statutory public defender? Do they have the same right to be oversight of a conflict panel situation? Those are legal issues that really have to be addressed as to governance. How is this going to be a working relationship between the committee, the community panel that is going to be creating, in some instances, policy and oversight? And what does that reporting look like from a statutory public defender offices? So, I think that the comment that was made is really very, very important and if the board seeks to lead the structure or the creation of an office through the primary focus being this public defender community panel, then I think that that needs to be real clear in the resolution and in the way governance is going to be created. I will tell you that there are issues of confidentiality, there are issues of conflict of interest, there's a lot of issues that have to be ironed out in a code of conduct, as was noted before in other presentations today, to ensure the independence of the public defender and at the same time, ensure the independence of the conflict attorneys that will be taking on cases that are not able to be handled by the public defender. And I'm not sure that the same panel can create oversight as to both. And so, those are issues of governance that have to be addressed.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Hi, my name is Thomas Quinn, I'm a public defender, I've been working here since June 2003. I've been through it all and seen it all. The 6AC report, it was well-intentioned, but there were just some real wild misrepresentations and exaggerations and even though I have some criticisms of how things have operated here, the implication that we're a bunch of bumbling incompetence, I, you know, I kind of resented and it's just not true. And as one of my colleagues said last time, we have some of the highest rates of acquittals and dismissals of any county in California. I think having a public defender office is a good idea in terms of conflicts, however, and there are other counties that are smaller than our county, they have public defender offices, Lassen County, Siskiyou County, they have them. But you would need to cover the first, the first level of conflict would be covered by a companion office called the alternate public defender. So, they, most counties have that, Mendocino County has it. So, I think setting up a public defender system on that basis would cover most of the cases, there would be some conflict attorneys, but I don't think that would be a high percentage of cases. So, I think LID has been doing a great job, I think our attorneys are highly competent and honorable and, you know, I think continuing, maybe having a LID 2.0 or something would be a good perspective for the intermediate term because I don't really see that, you know, there's a political will here. I think there are the resources, but, you know, so, I note that a former district attorney who I knew and we all knew was awarded $800,000 on a lawsuit that was entirely frivolous. So, I'm just not sure where the county's money is going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Quinn, I think presents some really good points. One is, as you're looking at this criminal justice stream, you realize how many parts there are to it, right? And how you have to navigate each one of them successfully. And one of them is, are you thinking about creating an alternate public defender, which a lot of counties have done? But other counties have basically kept a private panel. So, those are the kinds of decisions that really have to be addressed and maybe it's the kind of decisions that you do bring in a public defender community panel to assess and say, what is the best, right? I will tell you that the Speaker who said, you need to have a lot of knowledge in order to make some of these decisions, he's absolutely right. It takes a lot of knowledge to try to figure out how it is that you're doing it. El Dorado County just recently created an alternate public defender office, right? And they basically said, you know, this is the better way for us to ensure, you know, not only representation, but continuity in representation to be able to do that. In some counties, the public defender handles the budgets of both offices, but an independent leader is the head of an alternate public defender office. And there's very, very different structures. I do agree that there, that LID has an essential part in the creation of the future, of what this really looks like for the county. I do want to acknowledge something that Mr. Quinn mentioned and that is, everybody that knows the work that the Lake County attorneys are doing, knows how difficult it is and how hardworking they are. I hired an attorney in Marin from Lake County and the one thing that I saw in that attorney is an independent work ethic that was necessary to be able to address the caseload that he was facing in Lake County. So, I appreciate all the work that has been done and I appreciate the LID attorneys and that's one of the reasons I want to be very transparent in working with them as we move forward because I do respect everything that they've done.
Any other public comment?
Can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
Okay, and this is going to be really quick because Mr. Varela made a good point.
You state your name again.
Rob Brown.
Thank you.
So, uncertainty is a huge distraction. You're asking people to do this big job, this huge job that they're doing and I can tell you, I'm at the jail all the time, that's what I get paid for. They're there at nine o'clock at night, they're there on Sundays, they're there, these attorneys are there all the time visiting their clients, doing their job, doing it, you know, trying to be as effective as they possibly can. But uncertainty is a distraction. So, this extension of a contract, that may feel like a good thing coming from that end, but at this end, uncertainty that's felt on the fourth floor keeps good attorneys from doing their job effectively because they're distracted by, do I have a job in 30, in 90 days or whatever? So, keep that in mind, you know, we dealt with this with interim directors and that, the uncertainty of that is hard for the entire department. So, it ripples down and that's what's going on here. You have the uncertainty of what's going to happen with the department. Fisher cut bait, you know, get it, you know, get it out there, do it, you know, give them a year contract, whatever you're going to do, you've got to get it done so you don't have that uncertainty that continues with that distraction for these people that want to do their job effectively.
Yeah. I'll keep my comments brief, but. You gave your name one more time. Andrea Sullivan, a co-administrator of LID. There has been some discussion about advocacy that we could do to the state for budgets. I take a cynical and a dour view of that, I don't see any money coming down the pipeline. I see how much money we get in grants from the state, it's a pittance compared to what other counties get. We just don't have the population to make it sexy enough for the state to want to give us money. But one thing that this body can do is lobby the state to change current state law about independent contractors. The reason and a lot of the criticisms that exist is because independent contractors, by their very nature, in order to be legal, have to be able to be free to take other work. They can't be beholden to one entity. And all of us have professional licenses, no one would say that an anesthesiologist that has hospital privileges is an employee of that hospital and that person would have the ability to work freely. So, there's a tension between EDD and the obligations that the court and your board wants us to have. And the reason it developed into the way that it is, is to keep all of these balls in the air and petitioning our assemblywoman and petitioning the state to change that law, at least as it applies to public defenders serving alternate or conflict counsel, is free. It just requires a little bit of time and, you know, we could do it, but they're not going to listen to us, but they'd listen to you to say, our county doesn't have the resources to have a full alternate office, but we can have competent conflict counsel, but you need to change this because the EDD goes after us, it's going to go after you to make them employees. And if they're employees and you're giving them direction, you can't have. And if they're employees and you're giving them direction, you can't have the level of conflict. So it's a giant mess, and I think a non-fiscal resolution to all of this is, is getting that law changed. And, and your board has the ability to do that, especially with Mr. Varela helping along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have a response?
As you can tell, these are, these are complex issues. This, this is, this is one of those kinds of things where you set aside time to actually have a workshop on, you know, to, to decide how it is that, that you want to go forward or that you delegate it to a, a, a commission or a community panel that, that's going to be, you know, representative of, of people who receive the services. And, and so I think that some of the things that were voiced by a Speaker, this, this is going to take time. This is going to take time. And, and so there'll be further discussions along the way as to how it is you want to move forward, but this is a, a complex issue that has a lot of moving parts.
Okay. Is there any further public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Tom Feimer again. I just want to echo something Supervisor Brown mentioned about the, the problem of uncertainty. You know, DA Cronis and I, given our positions naturally, but also just, you know, as colleagues speak with each other regularly, she speaks about the difficulty of locating people, filling positions in her office. Hers is an office that pays more than we do, offers more benefits, and also isn't, nobody's thinking that the DA's office might just go away within 90 days. And they have an extreme number, amount of trouble locating qualified people to be DAs there. So it's very hard to get people to commit to come to Lake County. I came from Lake County from outside the area. I think that's, it was a commitment that paid off. I'm happy to make it. I'm happy I made it. But it's very hard to get people to come to our county and commit because we don't have just a natural pool of lawyers here. We have a very small legal community. We need to draw from without the county, and it's hard to get people to come and up in their lives with this level of uncertainty hanging over their heads. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further?
But I will tell you that, that having a public defender's office will lead to recruitment that is, is stable. Once a county commits to a public defender office, the recruitment of attorneys that either currently work in, in the county that wish to transition to a public defender office or others, once they see a stability of an office, you recruit. And one of the things that, that I did, and, you know, Marin County's one of the most expensive places to live. You talk about recruiting. I mean, people can't afford housing in the Bay Area. It's very, very difficult, right? And so the recruitment, you know, in, in Marin County was difficult. And as much as people think, oh, it's a rich, rich county, the, the funding for public defender is, 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 you know, not what you would think that would come from a, from a rich county. But the reality is that once you have an established office, you use the public defender networks that exist, and the private attorney networks that exist, to recruit people to an established office. I had an internship program that I started for law students, and we couldn't hire everybody in Marin County. And I encouraged all those students to go to Kern County, to Fresno County, to San Bernardino, to different counties that needed. I had the Siskiyou County Public Defender say to me, you just keep saying that people will come up here, what? I said, you want a public defender? I went to one of my interns, and I said, look, you want to be a public defender? You know I don't have a job here, because nobody leaves here, but do you, do you want a job? I said, you can get a job in Siskiyou County tomorrow if you're willing to go up there. She has been up in Siskiyou County now for five, six years. And so the, the goal is really to know how to find the pockets of people who are willing to be public defenders, because that's what they want to be. They don't want to be private attorneys. They don't want the, the business component that comes with being a private attorney. They want to be public defenders. And once you establish a statutory public defender office, that gives you a recruitment base to be able to get people to say, that's stability, that's what I want. And I think another point that was really essential, and it's essential to a lot of what recruitment looks like, is the notion of parity. You know, our public defender is going to receive the same benefits, the same salary, consistent with the district attorney. Parity is essential in being able to give the true respect and the true commitment to attorneys that in fact they are valued just as much as the district attorney's office and the work that they do. And so those are, again, big, large points, complex points that have to be taken into account.
Great. Thank you. Any further public comment? All right, I will close the public comment and bring it back. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just very briefly. So we, we can do both. We can be supportive of our existing Defense Council and LID, and try to signal some certainty. I mean, as has been stated, these are complex issues. No major changes, certainly not pending today. We wouldn't even know where to start, and that's why we have esteemed counsel here kind of starting this process. But, but I think in saying we're doing a really, really good job with the resources we have, it kind of highlights the point that you don't have many resources. Even fighting for conflict counsel with Mendocino and Sonoma County, I mean, to the extent we can keep conflict counsel interested in Lake County, it's always with one foot in another county. That's not sustainable. To the issues raised by Mr. Varela, supervision, training, accountability, competencies, can't do that with an independent contractor model that basically equates a highly trained defense attorney with an Uber driver. So I, I want to be very clear. I want to attack this downslide that has happened under realignment, so that you have a bare pittance of funding to do what you do with the current independent contractor model and whatever hub, you know, conflict counsel you can cobble together on top of that, and, and where we need to go. You know, I, I can't, I don't think anybody could pretend that acquittal rates, for example, are the best metric or the only metric we need to consider here, you know, as we look forward to how our indigent defendants are getting defended. So I want to be supportive. You know, I, I think we have a lot on our plate. I do like the idea of reactivating the, the committee, and we can talk about that another day. But I want to be very clear. I want to be supportive of where we're at and the people that have invested in our community and who do care very passionately about our legal system. And I do want to highlight that it is not all on the defense bar. I think by far the larger part of this puzzle does involve the state, does involve the judicial council, does involve more judges and courtrooms and stuff like that. It does involve breaking the cycle of dependency of conflict counsel that we get from other counties. And I think we have to build capacity in county to do that, and I think the statutory office is one way to do that. So I just want to do that. I want to be supportive of the people who are here and working this system as best they can, while also being very clear that substantial change is needed, and it is not just on Defense Counsel to propose those changes. Thank you.
Supervisor Spatier?
Couple of things. One, I think that we need to look at, if possible, I would like to look at the entire system. How do we streamline it to make sure that those with little to, I won't say no resources, but with little resources can ensure that they get the best out of what they have? And so hopefully the conversation will involve our judges, will involve our district attorney as well as public defenders to ensure that we have the most streamlined method to go through these proceedings. I know that I have sat down for one, which is not a, a huge amount. I do plan to do more in the courtroom. What I saw created more questions than answers, but I, I have some concerns that come out of there, where this seemed to be both on the district attorney's side as well as the public defender's side, where there was swapping of lawyers, because there's so many things happening that it's not possible for a single, singular lawyer to consistently be with their client at all times when they're in front of the court, which means that possibly somebody's had to catch up and review, get a brief summary of what's the situation, or possibly, maybe not, I don't know. And there was a lot of pushing back trial dates, which I think is all based, again, on the limited capacity within an individual person's calendar to make those things happen. I hope that we will end up with a, a better position in the long run. It will cost more money, most likely, but those are things that we need to accomplish and, without fear, and just looking forward to what, what are the solutions and how can we make those solutions happen. There have been discussions in the past about the committee. I'm, I'm hopeful that we can get that back sooner than later. I know there was some looking at revising to ensure that we had some professionals within the committee and not just public at large or not just Board of Supervisors, and I hope that that can come back to us sooner than later so that we can get those summaries. And what I'd like to do is, what are the metrics that we're looking for? What matters to us to ensure that we are getting the services that we want out of the relationship with a public defender's office or a public defender contractor?
Did you have something? Yeah. Well, I appreciate Admin and County Council working on this and bringing the presentation, and thank you, Mr. Varela, for, for joining us today. But I did want to ask what the next steps were.
We're going to set up a meeting with this gentleman and develop the contract and develop the next steps. And County Council and I are meeting next week to start on that process. There's not much more I can tell you right now, is that we're moving forward once after you were able to meet with him today.
Okay.
And we have revised the committee setup, and it already has been published, and we've received one application to date.
Great. Thank you. Anything further before we close this out?
Would we be scheduling that meeting after we, we get finished with the next process of the, the committee you're speaking of?
Well, I would assume that further efforts will be made to secure applications for the committee along the lines of what your board had previously approved. A professional services agreement for Mr. Varela has been drafted, and he has it under his review. I believe it's fine from his end, so we'll be getting a finalization through Admin so that can move forward. So then we'll begin the initial steps, as Mr. Varela had spoken about, coming back to your board repeatedly to update you.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.